So we don't quite have a quorum for decision making, but hopefully someone will make an appearance shortly. Yes, sir.
So what is, how many is a quorum?
I believe it's nine at the moment.
So I believe if Nancy was here, we had nine on the call, we have already established a quorum. Even if she's left, so I'm guessing we can vote and I'm guessing the only thing we have to vote on is minutes, is that right?
Yeah, probably, other than general consensus stuff. So having said that, if you all can turn your attention to the minutes from last July. And Ridge did pay me to indicate that he was going to be tardy. So I'd very much like any, any assignment of tasks that we need to make, we make them early to him before he shows up. So anybody have anything on these? Anyone, anyone have any comment on last of the minutes? Welcome back, Nancy.
I moved to accept the minutes.
Excellent.
Second.
Discussion. All right, any opposed? So moved. Moving on. Okay. As I indicated in my email blast out to you folks, this is a, I hope a fairly light meeting. It's one more about organizational discussion. But and there are a couple of housekeeping matters that probably work better a little further down into the agenda today, which I'll circle back to. But essentially wanted to take a look at now that we have a basic implementation tool to start talking about implementation, what that means and how we move forward with that. And well, we can, I guess, get to that in due course, based on my conversations with Deputy City Manager Sanders and staff. But meanwhile, Brenda, anything of note on the city update side?
Um, I can't think of anything off the top of my head. Alex might want to give you an update on the consultant's work on the comp plan. I know they went reported planning commission recently, so maybe Alex, you can jump in and give an update on that.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Greatness.
Yeah, um, yeah, the contact consultant provided update to the planning commission and at this point, the future land use plan proposal rather. And the other chapters within the con plan have been revised, you know, in accordance with the public comments and the feedback from council and the planning commission. There is a work session scheduled, you know, with the planning commission on the 31st of this month. Subsequent after that work session, there will be a meeting with the steering committee. And there might be some more changes based on the outcome of the meeting with the planning commission at the end of this month on the 31st. And then a joint, a joint city council planning commission meeting will be scheduled in October. At the regular planning commission meeting and then following that. Then there will be a recommendation from the planning commission to the city council for consideration. We are looking at completing all these before Christmas. You know, hopefully, as we get to take a shot, you know, on the adoption of the comprehensive planner sometime between November ending and Christmas. So that's where we are.
Right. Thank you, sir. Does not look like Stacy is in. As yet.
Our chair, can Brenda update us on the hiring of the housing coordinator?
Um, I know Deputy City Manager Sanders is working on that now, but other than that, I don't have an update. I just know we're working on it.
And Brenda, how long have we been without a housing coordinator?
Um, August of 2020, I believe.
So we're now a year without one, basically. Okay, thank you.
Not for lack of trying, if I might say.
Well, and yeah, that actually may have some bearing on our conversation of the implementation plan in just a few as well. Stacy is not here on matters of UVA housing. Alice, are you prepared to speak to that? Chris, I understand you had some interaction over there as well with their planning folks.
I, I am Phil. Now the time. Sure, I'm happy to give an update on our affordable housing initiative. You know, it's just under category of progress to date. Our initiative kicked off publicly in late April, as many of you know, with the Zoom meeting that included University President Jim Ryan, Chief Operating Officer J.J. Davis and Project Consultant Gina Merritt. About 125 people attended the session and the response was largely positive with 90% of attendees supporting UVA is developing an affordable housing initiative on university property. We have kicked off a listening tour with Gina with two goals, to perform the development principles that will guide the developers' work and understand where UVA's initiative can fit in and be complementary to existing efforts in the city and the county. Our consultant Gina Merritt met with over 40 organizations and more than 60 people, including an in-person visit at the end of June, and we're really grateful for all of those in the community who participated. Some of the common themes we heard include the following. This is not meant to be a comprehensive list, but that trust and transparency are critical. We need to define who will be served by the housing and, for example, what does affordable mean? There may be funding gaps even with low income housing tax credits and we need to figure out what the university will do about that. We don't have an answer just yet. I know site selection has been a question. So in parallel with all this work, the project consulting team has continued its due diligence on UVA and UVA Foundation owned land holdings in both the city and the county. Our findings will be discussed internally and with the advisory group and more information will be shared publicly this fall. We really appreciate the community's patience as we take the time to ensure internal consensus on the parcels. Internal consensus will help us move forward with more clarity and efficiency. With regard to our communications plan, we recognize that we need to let people know what we're doing on a more regular basis. It may appear that we're not doing anything, but I can assure you from our workload, that is not the case. Some people have commented that UVA's Affordable Housing Initiative is just an academic exercise and that we are not serious. And I can tell you now that this is a priority for the university and we're committed, as we've stated publicly, that we're supporting, we're supportive of development of 1,000 to 1,500 affordable units over the next decade. As has been published, we'll do this by contributing land and partnering with a third-party developer. So for more major milestones, we will issue news releases. We need to find a way to let people know that things are happening along the way and would also appreciate this group's ideas on channels to share information a little more clearly. We also post regular updates on our website, which is prescouncil, P R E S C O U N C I L dot president dot Virginia dot edu forward slash affordable hyphen housing. I'm happy to share that in the chat.
Please.
I think that's pretty much, you know, the general updates. I'm happy to share about, you know, more specifics about North Fork and what the foundation is doing in particular, but that's our general update. We're really trying to get that message out to all the various groups around the city. So thank you, Phil.
Ma'am. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. So. So a couple of matters here. Last week, we held a policy subcommittee meeting at the, which is a follow-up on the request of the city treasurer about regarding a re working and reauthorization and updated the ordinance surrounding a tax, a tax abatement for rehabilitation program that is operated out of the treasurer's office. Ridge piloted that meeting and he's not here. But on the record, that was, that was a terrific meeting and he did a terrific job coordinating that and standing that up and I will thank him when he makes his appearance. He indicated he'd be a little tardy today. And we are looking to engage in a rewrite of that ordinance based on the outgrowth of that conversation. I've included the minutes of that meeting in the link for anyone who wants to sort of get a to sort of take a look at that and what we're doing. That sort of harkens back to the work policy sub that he was doing prior to COVID where we would workshop little policy projects and push them back out to the city staff and provide sort of a a little more breadth on some expertise matters to speed things along. So I'm very grateful for his help there and we're going to work on that. I mentioned that because the next agenda item we've got is the Affordable Housing Plan Implementation. As you know, in our last meeting, we had a discussion of coming up with some sort of tracking tool to, to frame how we would stand up the Affordable Housing Plan. Deputy City Manager Sam Sanders pushed out a template for comment. And that is, and Juan Diego Wade, Joy Johnson, John Sales and I did comment on that. We held a very, very brief work session to sort of follow up on our email round robin. There weren't many substantive changes and I can show you that tool, which is there if I can do this in a semi- elegant manner. And show it. And then there we go. And here we are. So can everybody more or less see this? Am I actually sharing?
Yes, yes.
And this is actually a fairly straightforward spreadsheet. There's nothing terror, terrifically. You know, polished or even sexy about it. And it's designed to be able to be linked to other things and expand out as it's built. So, and we sort of categorized things. As you can see here, if I can get it to sweep over the way it needs to. But, you know, it sort of shows the priority, the scale, what resources, the, how do we measure it? How do we implement it, the tasks and where we are with it? And then we've sort of very roughly split them out into categories with the understanding that those are moving targets too, as is the the sort of sub, the, the substance of this document. And the idea here is that this is a useful base of operations. And as we build out and fill this out, it's going to produce the need for specific work product as we move forward. So that's the tool as sort of originally configured, which leads us to questions about what to do with it. But I'll stop now to say any sort of questions or comments based on your very brief eyeballing of this.
Phil, thank you. This is the first I've seen and it looks like a really simple and, and good start. My question is, how does this interact with the, what was it called? The IAT intervention analysis tool? Is that IAT specifically under funding or is that IAT something that, that sits above this? Because in some ways, the IAT was meant to be a sort of comprehensive tracker of the work in the multiple housing sectors from finance to tenants' rights to homeownership to affordable rentals, et cetera.
Excellent question. Oh, I'm supposed to have an answer to that question. So I, I see these as being integrated to each other and being tied to one another. I mean, I think this is more of a mechanical beast at the moment that it's designed to sort of show where we are and what we're doing on a very sort of mechanical stand-up program level. But yeah, I mean, I see that this, that an integration into the IAT and hot linking between the two of them in a, in some sort of synthesis. Seems to be the best use. I mean, seems to be an efficient use of both. So I don't have an answer to that. I am I am somewhere between highly impaired and utterly useless when it comes to making Excel do it. Do what I want it to do. But there are those here on this call who are much better versed at that. But yeah, I see this as integrating with the IAT. And I also think we've got data going out there on implementation of other projects that there's just going to be a clearinghouse for a whole lot of data.
What is the status of the IAT? Was that ever adopted by, apart from the hack, by any other formal body, the planning commission? Was it, I can't remember whether it was actually even mentioned in the housing strategy. Or does it need a sort of, as an idea, formal adoption?
I don't know the answer to that.
Let me, let me jump in there for a moment, if I may. I don't think, as far as I know, it was never formally adopted in any forum. However, during the early days of the consultant engagement around the development of the Affordable Housing Plan, the consultants reviewed it and my memory is that they said that they had sort of a typical version of, a similar version of their own. And there is going to be some review and or fleshing out of the IAT kind of as part of the Affordable Housing Plan format and adoption. My, I don't know this as fact. My suspicion is that they were, their amount of available hours to do their work under their contract got consumed by other things and so it never got integrated. For, for, but that, that's my presumption. I don't know that as fact.
Is there a process for updating and integrating new things into the housing strategy or is it?
Funny you should ask. So I mean, in, in part, based on my, because the brief conversations I've had, this tool, as we work through it, will provide that opportunity. Because the guideposts and timelines provided by the plan are, of course, as we know, are not going to come together that way. No matter how well-intentioned and no matter how close to accurate, the timeline is not really going to be the timeline we end up with. Even if we start off with the best will in the world to essentially follow it. So I think this tool has that capacity for as we make progress on certain parts of this to say, wait a minute. X really needs Y and Z to be connected to it. Or we need to think about Z instead of X because that makes more sense or that, that will work and this won't. So I think that's so I think we can make it part of the plan by using this tool.
Phil, this is Chris. I'll just say, you know, as, as a tool, it looks like it's got the things to me that needs to have around. Again, specificity around activities or actions that need to be taken. People that are responsible for those so that it can be held accountable and allocations of money if that's needed, et cetera. So kind of some short, medium, longer term, again, planning side of it. All that makes sense to me again, as mentioned, I think to be able to understand where things are at, how they might interact with each other, et cetera. So I, I think at the moment, my reaction to this would be it's in pretty good shape, I think, to do what it needs to do.
Thank you, sir. And, and all of us who discussed this said, you know, said, this is a, this thing is subject to modification as we learn what we really need to have on it. Because there are things that are going to show up that, you know. But that's the nature of this, of this process, surely. Any other thoughts on this thing immediately before I turned our attention to what we do with it now? So let me see if I've got, if I'm getting flat down. All right. So, okay. So what I'm based on this tool, based on our discussions at the last hack meeting and based on my conversations with staff and Deputy City Manager Sanders. Turning our attention to what we do with this tool and how we proceed and the hacks interaction with the Affordable Housing Plan brings us to this. As Sam Sanders made clear and as all of us understand and as Chris has pointed out yet again, the plan does not have the human capital resources to move very rapidly at the moment. We don't have a main housing person. We are likely going to need other city resources beyond existing staff. You know, I presume that Jim Freas is going to hit the ground at a trot at least next month and will find his feet pretty quickly, but still it's going to take a certain amount of time for NDS under new leadership to crank up the engine. Bye, Ridge. So having said all of that and speak of the devil. Greetings, Sam. I was just about to, what do we do with this tool and how, and how could we be helpful? So based on those conversations, I would like to sort of propose that we that we leverage the expertise we have and that we take a stab at looking closely at segments of this plan and what is necessary to stand them up and go about the business of filling out that worksheet. And I, and I think that we can be helpful as the hack to do that in working with staff in some sort of broad way. And there are a couple of ways to approach that, but what I would suggest is I was sort of thinking of, of a, it's not exactly a subcommittee because I think it's important that we spread enough of this out to the entire hack to make this work. But I would suggest that and also you know, if we call something the Policy Implementation Subcommittee, that acronym doesn't really lend itself well to the newspaper. But what I would suggest is sort of a working group of some members of the hack and staff to meet regularly, to look at each piece of this as we go, public meeting with the entire hack participating one way or the other. I mean, we're invited to participate, but with a core group that will sort of chop this up. We can assign outfits and pieces of it, of it between staff and hack members who can take a deeper dive and provide some preliminary policy stand-up documents for the pieces of it. And sort of workshop pieces of this affordable housing plan. I understand that I'm sort of very blithely inviting everybody to devote hours and hours of their lives to this. And I don't want to soft pedal that either. So, but I'm sort of envisioning is sharpening up the subcommittee process. Hopefully, we can get back to in-person meetings so this can go more rapidly in the fall, but that might be going sideways. But have something like that. So that would be Brenda. Yeah, that sort of would be Brenda, John Sales. The Sam Sanders, Jim, once he gets here, his designate, at least on the hack side, you know, I think Lyle, obviously with his integration on the planning commission and harkening back to our original sort of strategy committee, committee, members of that as well, maybe, I don't know, six or eight members in the hack. That's sort of what I'm thinking about. That's in conjunction with sharpening up our subcommittee structure and I need to get a memo out to all of you on that. There I'm at. So that's my, that's my sort of pitch and thought. Does anybody have any, and I'll sort of open that concept up to discussion. Does that make sense to do? Having said that, I've just burdened everybody on this hack with more work.
Phil, I'll react first. You know, one, I, I do think this sounds like city staff should own it in general, just because of it being a tool and the majority of, I think, the resources probably for things coming from the city budget. So that makes me, in addition to, and I, I would say, for example, from LEAP though, when we're on the rehab side, energy efficiency side, I know where all the money is to certain extent, a lot of the money is not only in short and medium term. And I'm happy to help, you know, work with someone from staff, whether it's Aaron, Brenda, or the new housing coordinator, or somebody else to again, review that and, you know, add in the necessary information about what we know about, you know, where it should be placed. And I guess I can do that in ad hoc manner. I just need to know, you know, if is it a Google Doc or is it a, you know, again, some other Microsoft sharing, you know, functionality. I don't, I would question if we need a policy committee to, to dive into it. I do think to your point though, once the document is complete, coming back and getting a reaction from the whole hacked and reviewing it and seeing where things, you know, my gaps might be or there are some things that might be, I missed, it would be valuable. Thanks.
Gotcha. So let me sort of clarify. I'm proposing that this working group, staff and hack step in, in heavy duty authorship of that, filling out of that document. That that is a collaborative effort between staff and the hack to get this up and running. That that is a collaborative effort between staff and the hack to get this up and running. Because right now we are dealing with the situation where we have a plan that is in general been adopted. We do not have the, we have not, do not have an organization of how to implement it. We do not have, we have sub-infidated policies that have not yet been written that need to be developed and then used by staff that does, that is not yet there. And if we are passive on that point, a lot of nothing can happen for months and months. And my idea is let's get as much of a start on this in 2021 as we can. So that when hopefully later in the year, when we have the human capital we need, when we have the money starting flowing, that we are a leg up and we're at least halfway down the field on some of these things instead of starting from a standing start, trying to figure out what next. That's my thought. So. Any further thoughts on this? Does it make sense to anybody? Am I crazy? Is everyone staring at their calendars and?
I mean, in a, in a really general sense boiled down, I don't know that our, that we have many other options other than to jump in and support staff as our senior leadership team in the city rebuilds the infrastructure in City Hall adds people, add staff on the housing side. Hopefully, you know, at some point they're in a better position to do that, but I think I can speak for myself and maybe for some others that I'm willing to step up and help however Sam and and the senior staff think we can be useful, certainly vetting this stuff, running with some with pieces of it in collaboration with staff makes a ton of sense to me.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, I think is my understanding is and Brenda and Aaron and I guess Sam, sorry, nice to meet you also. Budgeting is happening right now, right? And initial budgets are putting together right now. So, you know, like to your point, Phil, I do think we need to move on this sooner rather than later, just because obviously if we're going to implement this Affordable Housing Plan requires money in most cases from a lot of it and a lot of activities at least in that in theory, hopefully should be baked into next this upcoming fiscal year's budget. So.
Sam, did I capture this reasonably well? Is this in line with your general thinking?
Hello, everyone. Yes, Phil, you did. And sorry, I was playing double duty trying to finish up three calls at the same time.
No idea, no idea what you're talking about there.
I'll say yes, you captured it because being perfectly honest with you and trying to remain the straight shooter that I promised to always be. If I had to timeline this and staff handle it, we probably would not have it done by the end of the year. So that is why it is important that we can get the assistance from members of the hack to help lay out the document while simultaneously looking at what the recommendations need to be from the budget perspective as we do it. So I think that that's part of the overall process for now. Until we can get some capacity in place to help prioritize how staff would handle it.
Any other? Thank you very much, sir. Any other general thoughts on it? Now, I know it's, again, I know that I've essentially called a hack meeting and said, hey, any, how many of y'all want to volunteer for a part-time job? But I think that for those us who have parts of this where we are pretty deep in the, in the nitty gritty details anyway, it's the, it's, it's a good way to leverage our expertise at the moment. So there's that. So well, if there isn't an objection to that as a sort of general way to proceed. I think that sort of dovetails into how that would operate and the relationship to subcommittees as they are. Because I can see that some of this is a working group that says this is really something that Lyle and the land use people need to take closer look at. Here it is. Boom. Policy. Look at that, you know. You know, you know, city finance office has to deal with all of this or whatever. But that means sort of a tightening up of our subcommittee structure. I'm hoping that if we can get back in-person meetings, that will make things go more fluidly. But I do see this as meeting every few weeks with the whole hack invited in. And we sort of deal with it as it comes and hand out bits and pieces of it as it makes sense to do. And I don't have a, I wish I had a more elegant way to sort of make this work, but I don't. But I'm open to suggestions on elegance.
So for example, getting to dance, but I'm willing to take a crack at the rehab and again, energy efficiency component of it. Who, from the city side, should I just make sure I'm coordinating that?
Exactly. That's the purpose of this working group, right? So the working group would sit down and figure out, okay, how do we chop this up? Who gets what pieces? How do we coordinate this? How are we filling this out? Who's going to be responsible for what and what order? And then take it from there. So that's a question for a couple of weeks out.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
I just thought we kind of agreed to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's in, that's what we'll do.
Right. I said, I didn't know if we were able at this moment, maybe to get move a little bit quicker and identify the relevant staff or I could just work with existing staff that I have at the moment to get this moving. I can, I can fill this out in the next four weeks for my section. I just, I'm just my, my point being, I don't know about Dan's side or Sunshine's side, but.
Chris, Chris, I think it needs to be a little bit more coordinated because back to Dan's point earlier around the IAT. That's a, it's a pretty interconnected document that's, that yes, there are separate buckets and sections, but ultimately they all need to kind of interconnect and respond to each other. And so I think actually from my perspective and I generally agree with the way that Phil and Sam have talked about it. I don't think we have to balance the, the existing staff capacity with the roles that we can play now to keep things moving. I think fundamentally there's one more sort of big picture step process to figure out through this subcommittee or whatever it is to figure out how the IAT and this document play well together and support each other. And and to take the, the big picture conversation of how do we then start to divvy up the specific work within that context?
That sounds good to me. I'm just, I'm ready to start knocking some stuff out and when the time is ready to go. So.
Great. We will be happy to shift things to your desk rapidly. Any other thoughts on this at this point? All right, well. If we're going to form that thing, I'm volunteering, the first hack member, I'm volunteering for membership on that is Lyle. For the obvious reason that he's our planning commission. And since he's not here, I'm going to interpret his silence, his acquiescence to that. So congratulations, we've got our first hack member. I'll, I will volunteer myself for that as well. I don't know how many hack members this makes sense to do, to do. I mean, I think as many as who have the bandwidth to do it and can engage in it and make the time commitment to do it, will do it. And I'm not going to put anybody on the spot today on that.
So can I make, Phil, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Why don't you and Sam and Lyle get together and scope it beside who, you know, what the ideal size is? But the general, a little bit more definition, let's go for work and then invite people. Ask people to do it so that we, we know that we've got the right number of people, the sort of the right people with the, with the bandwidth at this particular moment, et cetera.
Okay, I like that.
One caveat to that. Sorry, Ashley, so you're going to go.
Just to make sure you have diverse perspectives on this smaller group that you're in the process of creating.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
The other comment I would make is, and I don't know how this coexists between Rory and Lyle, although Rory is not on the hack. Rory did work heavily on revising the IAT and understands the underpinnings of it better than anyone else. So I think, and maybe that's a second phase in terms of engaging Rory, just to make sure that his expertise, Excel expertise doesn't get lost in the mix, but just wanted to highlight that.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. All right. So following up on Dan's suggestion, Sam, does that make sense? You, you, Lyle and I should have a chat the next 10 days, week or 10 days and figure out exactly how to scope this thing and what we're doing.
Yeah, that works. I mean, that makes sense.
Okay.
Is it possible to add John Sales to that?
Oh, I would think so. My, my instinct is that this working group, once we stand it up, is going to, is going to have John, Sam Sanders, NDS, Jim over at NDS and Brenda Kelly, all as anchor members of that. That's my instinct.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else at this point that we can really dive into on this or we sort of have a consensus that that's our next step? I would take that as the.
Bye.
Sounds good to me.
Nope. Ridge, you missed, I don't know if your ears were burning, but you missed all the sweet and nice things I said about you in the running of that subcommittee meeting last week. Thank you.
I'm glad this is recorded because I won't believe it otherwise.
Wise man. Wise man. Okay, public. I've been noting, I haven't seen anybody firing off flare guns, but any comments on this from from the public? And Rory, we just volunteered you for part of this prospect. I see you're on, on as an attendee.
Yeah, happy to help any way I can. Just let me know.
Okay, any other matters that we need, any other business that we need to discuss at this point? Anything that I've let slide by? Okay.
I moved to adjourn.
Record 49 minutes. All right. Anything else? Anybody have a?
Back in.
Okay, excellent. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? No, appearing, no opposition. We are now adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I'll get in touch with you in the next week or so. We'll try to have a sit down with Lyle.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, dear.